If you would, please stand by our invitation to pledge allegiance.
My gracious heavenly Father, what a blessing it is, Lord, to be able to come out and gather freely. Please be with us, Lord, to make the best decisions for the best, what's best for Piggins County as a whole. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather freely, be with our local elected officials, our state officials, and our national officials. Help them, Lord, to seek your guidance in all their decisions according to thy will, which we know is right and good. Be with our nation's soldiers that are fighting for us and defending our freedoms, Lord. In all these many favors and things, we ask in our sons' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Item two is reading of last month's meeting minutes.
How much motion would they give for this written?
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second to adopt last month's meeting minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is old business. We have none. Item four is new business. We have four different items this evening. I would like to announce that we won't have a public hearing for item number one or eight, RZ 02-19-1269. I'd like to ask Rodney what the county's recommendation is for this, please.
Yes, sir. The county has been approached by Zachary and Chase Alford, who have submitted an application to rezone the 6.17 acres of property located at 230 Old Mill White Extension in Jasper. The current use listed for this property is highway business. The Alfords would like to rezone the property to agricultural, reason being they're, would like to put in an event center. They're also interested in possibly purchasing some property adjacent to it, which is zoned agricultural. As you know, unfortunately, our zoning doesn't allow us to do the event center in the highway business setting. We're having to go with the agricultural with the conditional use until we can get that ordinance changed and adopted. So the county does recommend that this zoning be approved.
Is either Mr., Mr. Alfred, too?
Yes.
Is there anything that you would like to say?
Yeah, so we're just, this is my, I'm Zach. This is my brother Chase. I currently live in Ball Ground, Georgia, and my grandfather lived in Big Canoe. We love the Canoe, the community. And we had seen a building that we saw would be great for an event facility, and we looked into purchasing the venue and currently just looking to rezone to do an event facility.
Have you already purchased it?
It's under contract. It's not purchased.
Do you have questions for Mr. Alfred?
I have one for Rodney, actually. Why are, why is this going agriculture waste only six acres? Agriculture should be ten acres.
Yes, it is, but like I said, they are currently looking at adjacent property that is agricultural so that it would be combined. They're going, their intent was to use the adjacent property of agricultural as parking for the facility to maintain the flow of traffic through Old Mill White.
So is that adjacent property, do you have a contract on it yet, or is it pending?
No, sir, not currently.
So Rodney, what happens if, because they're unable to acquire that additional piece of property and get to the 10 acres?
Currently, what the ordinance calls for as far as agricultural is if you create or split a new lot, it has to be a minimum of 10 acres with 10 acres left. So the changing of the zoning is not creating a new lot, it's just changing the classification of that property to the agricultural instead of the highway business.
It's always been 10 acres, is what I can understand.
You are correct. It is 10 acres if we create a new lot. However, we're not creating one in this instance. We're just simply changing the zoning classification from highway business to agricultural. I haven't generated or we have not created a new lot out of any other lot, it's just changing the zoning classification.
A memo that was done last September states that the minimum of 10 acres lot size unless there's an intra-family land transfer.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not, this is not a land transfer.
No, ma'am, it's not. But then again, we haven't created a new lot.
You're cutting out six acres?
We're not cutting out, it is what it is.
There's no...
Yes.
So we've got a conditional use that will follow?
Yeah, will follow this if this is approved. Yes, sir.
I don't know, 67A, just a definition of agriculture says that it's hereby established with the purposes of maintaining the agriculture and forest land resources in the form of minimal to the continuation of agriculture. I don't see that they're changing this for any benefit to agriculture.
Unfortunately, until this planning commission and the planning and development office adopt new ordinances, it's the only vehicle that we have currently available in order to move forward on the event centers such as this.
Phil, are you on board with what you're telling me about here?
I think Rodney makes the point that we're not, it isn't creating a new, a new parcel. There's, we do have other parcels that are less than 10 acres. I've come fairly certain on the tax holes that are zoned agricultural, that are, that are less than 10 acres. Through, for various reasons, but none of which that I'm aware of that were created by cutting out less than 10.
Maybe grandfathered or whatever.
But I think the other, to the other point about is this an agricultural activity? I believe this board in the past hasn't perfected the use of agricultural land in this way as somehow related to, to, to the agricultural industry of agriculture use of the property. But I mean, to that end, we've had other wedding venues or events, events being used on agriculture.
So if you cannot obtain the adjacent land, you would not have a space for parking, is that correct?
It would, we would then need to build, do parking on our current land, and we do have space for current parking. It would just be a more natural setting for the property beside it to be available for parking. It's a flatter area. It's not as elevated. It would just be a more in-depth process to create parking on the current property. But it is, it is possible. And we've actually had graders out there to kind of back that up as well, to say, yes, we can put enough parking.
Are you looking to cater towards any specific type of events, or is it just any special event?
Any special event? So when we, like I said, my, my wife's granddad and grandmother lived in Big Canoe a long time. I'm living Ball Ground. We're very close. And we were just looking for a place to open up for speaking engagements, birthday parties, you know, you've got Santa on Halloween, I mean, Santa on Christmas. You've got Halloween stuff, the occasional wedding here and there. There are just a lot of uses for a facility of this size for events. And we just felt like it would be a great asset to Big Canoe to have that available. And that's why we're pursuing it.
How many square feet are you looking at for the building?
The building is 10,000 square feet with a 1,200 non-heated and air-conditioned out building.
Any other questions from the board, from Mr. Alfred? If not, we have somebody that would like to speak in the public. Is there a Mr. Matthew Wood?
Yes, sir.
Could you please state your address?
610 Old Mill White Road Extension. My family's here with me this evening, Luke, Richard, and Lyle. And we moved from the other side of the county to the home we're in now about 18 months ago, for a couple of reasons. We were in a small neighborhood, and we were interested in a larger tract of land that we could have horses on, a rural setting that would allow our kids to ride bikes, ride horses up and down the road, and enjoy a little bit of country life. We're aware of the Lakota Cove. I actually did work for Linda some years ago. So we were aware of that property. When we became aware of the intent to rezone, it caused some concern, which is why we're here this evening, specifically a special events center. And now, as I hear the gentleman speaking, wanting to provide, for the express pleasure of Big Canoe, understand that that's, that's not why we moved to that location and bought that home, was to provide an experience there. We have some good friends who live directly next to another event center in Cherokee County, old family land, and they lived there for many years. They have gone on to describe late night parties, loud music, drunkenness, camping, things that can occur with these types of centers. So one could understand why that, why that's cause for concern for us as we are trying to conduct our lives there. I was looking at some of the ordinances that have been mentioned, and I'm concerned with parking. I'm concerned with section 42.2, some of the disorderly conduct, create by or in any manner loud noises which disrupt, disturb, or otherwise interfere with the peace and tranquility of the public, some public intoxication concerns, various issues in the appendix A as it relates to site access, hours, and manners of operation. I understand that it's, it's their duty, the burden, to prove to us that it will not change the public health, safety, morality, or the general welfare of the neighborhood. I'm concerned if alcohol is to be consumed on property, we don't have ride-sharing services such as Lyft or Uber, so these individuals, when they get in their motor vehicles and leave and they pass my home, is there, is there risk to my family? Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
And Mr. Wood, where is your home relative to this property?
300 yards east.
That's further down?
Yes, sir. Just before the, the road goes back to gravel there.
Any other questions? Are you on the other side of Georgia Power runway?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. My name's Ralph Fitz, and I have land across from, I guess, I'd like to speak with Phil. You said other venues similar, were on smaller tracts of land?
Well, I said that there were other, we had other parcels that were zoned agricultural that were less than 10 acres, is what I said. I do not know one way or the other.
If there's a venue, well, what I was, what I was getting at was, was there, was there something in similar communities where it's that tight or knit housing? Where the, where the, where there's that many smaller lots that close to the venue?
Yeah, I, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know.
That and I know there was some, when the land was developed, I think there was some covenants on the land, and I'm not sure what the covenants will be, but it would do to look into it before it went too far, because I know that there was, Dick Lawson had the land, and I know that he put, he put some covenants on it.
Did you?
Originally 300 acres of land, it was divided into seven lots. And there were some, there were some covenants on the land. So once it, once one's old, you're all locked into that covenant. So that would be another issue that might be looked into before it got too far along.
That'd be more on the, whoever was closing it as far as less, less, I mean, in the package, they're, they're telling the board there aren't any covenants that they're aware of.
Thinking there was.
I don't know. I can't, I can't remember a thing at all.
I'd like to say one thing, Ms. Wood, I believe. He brings up great points for the event facility. Those are all very, very valid. I just wanted to mention that we do have a events manager, a venue manager, that has been doing events for 17-plus years now, and she is very first in any type of social event. And we will have staff onsite at every event, and we are constantly going to be monitoring and looking over the attendees at our events. And with safety is obviously going to be a very, very large key to what we're doing. And that's why we're going to have a full-time staff onsite. It's not going to be ever attended without our supervision. It's never going to be rented out or anything to that concept. So those are great points, though, and we will be looking over those for sure.
I'd like to say something if I could. My name is Kim Fitz, Ralph's wife, and I'm just wondering if you have any ideas of the capacity of the facility of the, the public that you plan on, on entertaining in your facility might be? That's a very small, narrow road, and I know that they've already had some right-of-way issues with that. I know that it actually ends and goes into gravel because they've had several issues with maintaining that road. If you're, if you're letting out, say, I don't know, a party of 300, what's that going to do to the capacity of the road right-of-way for the neighborhood? That's, you know, it's pretty not tight-knit neighborhood you're in, and I'm just wondering if you could address that.
Yeah, so, sorry, I can't, trying to see, but, so with that being said, that's why right now, we have pursued putting in an actual parking lot to where we can have a events manager, have a onsite parking assistant at all of our events, and one by one, the cars will be spaced out and distributed, distributed back out safely and efficiently. That's why we, we had talked about maybe purchasing the land next door so we could build off a very flat, level parking lot and distribute everyone up there safely and efficiently. Parking is definitely a huge concern at the venue and traffic as well. We definitely saw that when looking at the venue. So we're addressing, we're trying to address those head-on, being that we don't want to cause any disruptions in the neighborhood. And we've been around the neighborhood and tried to diagnose the flow of traffic the best we can, and it looks like the most traffic is going to be able to leave right out the top of Old White Mill Road, straight on to the...
Cove Road.
Cove Road, that's correct, that's correct. But yes, we're still addressing that issue right now currently.
Well, I guess, I guess I don't take issue with the parking. You know, I can understand any facility needs to have good parking, but my thing is, is that it's a very, very narrow road. So when you turn out to go to the Cove Road, you already have that blind spot there. You know, there's a definite blind spot, which is a hazard, of course. And then you have the families that are coming that are exiting, and if you have, you know, my gosh, if you separate them out so that you can accommodate the people that are traveling and you have, you know, say 300 minimal, I mean, I've been to several weddings, you know, 300, very minimal, that's a small wedding. You know, your, your guests are going to wait hours before they can, you know, kind of disperse if you, if you let them out on such a small, narrow road. If it was a four-way, or if there was an actual access road to get on and off, maybe? It's just, it's just such a small rural road.
Excuse me, I remind you, the dialogue mixed between whoever's speaking and the planning commission, the board here.
I apologize.
That's okay. I shouldn't mention that before.
I thought you were responding.
No, no, no. Right, no, no, right. If you would ask direct question towards us and you're, and then I will prompt.
First.
So, anyhow.
I understand, I'm sorry.
No, no, I should, I apologize for not mentioning that beforehand, so, but just going forward. So is there any other questions, please?
So we've had many discussions on this type of venue, and it all comes down to, not all, but many times, the concerns address the operating hours and that sort of thing. And I, I wanted to, I recognize that's part of our next hearing to really talk about that, but I think it's part and parcel of considering approval of this, is that you don't have any objection to reasonable operating hours of the facility that would object, that would have adverse impact on the neighbors at this point?
No, sir. I believe, yeah, I believe the noise ordinance is 10:00 PM, and we 100% plan to abide by that. Any other ordinances put in place to our best abilities? It's going to be, as I said, it's going to be professionally managed and adhered to for any ordinances.
I have a question over here in the back room.
Yeah, I'm Marty Dorsey, and I have a house directly across the road from Lakota Cove, the facility, and some of the, the question was about the, the noise and the ordinance on that, and he mentioned, he believed there was an ordinance, a sound, about a sound like at 10 o'clock at night. So is there a ordinance in Piggins County that, I mean, are we, I'm not familiar with it.
There's not a noise ordinance. I don't think we have one. If I'm not mistaken, please correct me, it's a nuisance ordinance?
Well, there's general nuisance law, but as far as noise ordinance, it's got to be a good precedent there.
There's not, there's not a noise ordinance per se. There is a nuisance ordinance in the, in the county. I kind of fall underneath that. So if somebody's out there at 1:00 at morning, whatever, disturbing the peace.
That was my, that was my concern.
Or, you know, at an unreasonable hour.
There just needs to be, like I said, a cutoff time sometime if this thing was to go through it. Some kind of test.
Mr. Fitz?
Bill, I'd just like to bring kind of one more thing to the attention. When you're leaving out from Old Mill White to go onto Cove Road, if you look to your right or if you look to your left, it's a pretty dangerous access road right there. You know, you don't really have a very good line of sight. So before any decisions are made, I would request that y'all go and kind of assess the situation and look, you know, we have the Kaylee Shatens, and it looks very sad, you know, there's just, when you leave a party like that, you know, that's, that's a very dangerous access road right there. And I think that it would do you justice to go and look at it and kind of just see what the situation is as far as pulling out on the Cove Road, off of Old Mill White Road. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Part of the management team that's making the proposal here, it's actually my two sons. I'm 56 years old, heavily involved in what we're trying to do here, and heavily responsible for what we're doing. When you come into the facility, I've gone the other way on the road where they live, and I got lost. I mean, to go that way and turn into gravel is very uncertain path of travel when you don't know where you're going, you don't live here. So I'm pretty certain that all of our traffic will direct back out on the Cove Road, and it will come in off Cove Road. When I turn in there, it's a pretty wide road. It does bend down in front of the facility. There are shoulders on both sides of the road, and we'd want you to look at it. It's, it's plenty wide through there. We've got two turn-ins in the facility currently if we don't purchase any other property. We have been in contact with the other property owner. We've got a real estate agent that has spoken with them about the possible purchase. We've actually discussed pricing. We're waiting to see what this goes on before we try to go into contract there, taking one step at a time. As far as a noise ordinance or anything, we're committed to have the noise shut down at 10:00 PM, which means at that point, everything would have to be inside the facility. It's a huge facility. It's got doors and walls all around it. There's no openings unless you open the door. So there's no big open entrances or anything that you can't control down. We're not going to alter that when we buy it, if we're fortunate enough to push this through. So the noise gets contained in the building similar to if you had some guests at your house. It's more people than you would have at your house. And when you talk about if you have 100 or 200 people show up at an event, they don't all drive separately. Some people might, but normally when you attend the event, whether it's a family reunion or retirement party or a wedding, you would ride with people. You would go with other family members. You have two or three people in a car. So I think, I want to create a concept, there's 300 vehicles showing up that everybody showed up separately, and that everybody had to leave separately. So they do come in various ways, but the car count would be much less than the actual attendee account. And we're obviously already been in contact with the fire marshal. We've let them out there. We've talked about the facility, what would have to be done to make it approachable for what we're trying to do. Fire marshal's put out his concerns. We, we're addressing those. They're very minor. We're looking at trying to do remodeling. What I would want to tell the board here is you have a magnificent building sitting there, and this gentleman is fully familiar with it, it's a beautiful building, and the furniture company was in there. So you've got this 10,000-square-foot facility that has been sitting for a number of years, vacant, and it is deteriorating. It's going to become an eyesore to the community. It's been through a repossession of the bank. The bank that currently owns it's sitting here. He's had it for several years and cannot find anything to do with it. A nursing home was going in there. I think that might have got as far as this. I'm not sure how far it got, but that was turned down. They were wanting to do assisted-living nursing home and add on to the building and stretch it out and have all of this stuff going on with potential ambulances coming in at all times to get the assisted-living people out. If you look at the building, it's a special-use building. It's not going to be used by very many people. If you don't need to get a big crowd in, you're not going to go in a room that's literally bigger than a basketball gymnasium inside. That's what it's for. It's for some type of event. To host that many people, there's got to be parking addressed, whether we do it or somebody else does, and does something with it, whether it's a, you know, it turns into something more local for the community. That much room, it's going to have to be addressed of how that's going to be used, or I guess the bank or the county, y'all've got, you know, a problem going forward somewhere of what to do with it and eventually what's going to happen with it. But I would just like to say that we're very good business people. We're very considerate. We have families. I have grandchildren. I've got children, obviously, they're here. I run a business in the Coney area, one of the larger building material industry businesses in Atlanta, Georgia. So I'm very familiar with people, problems, processes, things that have to go on, and we're not doing this to be a problem in the neighborhood, to be a problem in the community. And we would want to be friendly with everybody around us, and if there was concern, we're open to hear those, and we're not going to, we don't want people mad at us, is what I would say. We're here to do the right thing by the community, the right thing by the neighbors. I do understand that if I moved out to the country, even with a furniture store being there, they created traffic in and out, people shopping and coming and going, and I really don't want to want my neighborhood. Those lots in there are fairly large. You look at the plaques, nobody's on one acre. People are on multiple acres. So there's a lot of rooms spread out. The houses are back off the road. I do know there's other things going on down that road. People are running businesses out of their homes on that road. So there's already some things going on on that road that are beyond just residential living. So I just want to make that comment that we're, you know, not fly-by-night, not jump in and turn it into something it shouldn't be. As far as public drunkenness and all that, if we have a problem that our management can't control, we'll be the first one to call the sheriff out there and say, we've got rowdy guests that need to be removed from the property before we have to have a neighbor call on that. And if that happened, we would certainly like to know about it, because we need to talk to our events manager and address that. That can't happen in the future, because we don't want this type of problem. We're not in it for problems.
Any other questions, councilor?
Just, I got a quick question. I do understand the timeline correctly here, since it's under contract with these gentlemen that have made the application. It would not actually revert to agricultural zoning unless the purchase goes through as the applicant's correct?
If, if the planning commission doesn't approve it as agricultural, then I don't believe the sale would go through. It's contingent on it.
No, no, the, the reverse of that. If we approve it, and the county commission approves it to be rezoned agricultural, would that still not be kind of contingent upon once they bought? Since they're not the actual property owners applying for rezoning?
Property owners, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One, one's for commissioners, I think, that's, that's reasonable. Unless it's you.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the recommendation of the planning commission for this particular event, RZ 02111269, as proposed.
We have a move to accept the recommendation to change from our way of visiting agriculture.
How's that one?
We have a move in a second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor of recommending to change the zoning, please raise your hand. Two, any votes?
I have to abstain, Mr. Chairman.
So, it's three against two, three, three no, and two yes. Motion does not recommend to approve. This does not give approval. That hearing is closed. The next.
Mr. Cagle, will you make a question?
That, that's hearing is closed, sir. For item one, the hearing is closed. I'm sorry. The next item on the agenda is item B, SUSE 04-19-1266. Like that's the county's recommendation.
I believe that one at this point in time is being moved.
Well, I think, we got to open up a pop here.
County does give recommendations to it, yes. The planning and development staff.
So, with it being.
Advice of counsel, with the denial of the previous one, then the county is not in a position to give approval or denial to it?
The understanding is not available.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's the vote.
I haven't looked at the grid, but that's the one.
Okay. So, we go to item C, RZ-3-19-1267. Sorry, we will have a public comment a little bit later.
Okay, I just, I just have a question about the property because if this can't be done.
Okay, just wait, wait, wait the public comments.
Sure.
We have item C, RZ-3-19-1267. We have an open hearing for this. Request, like to ask Rodney what the county's recommendation is.
Yes, Mr. Lawson submitted an application to rezone 4.01 acres of property located at 1182 Talking Rock Road in Jasper, Georgia. Current listed for the property is rural residential, and he would like to rezone the property to highway business. Now, the intended purpose for it is to put in some mini warehouse buildings, and the county, the planning and development office does recommend this be approved.
Mr. Lawson, is there anything you'd like to mention?
Uh, one thing about it, he said, storage buildings. I plan on putting a one climate control building that's gonna be like 20,000 to 25,000 square feet, and then the back will have RV and boat storage, which is a low-traffic business. Shouldn't disrupt the community at all with that.
And this is located next to Living North Church in the backyard, please?
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Lawson, have you developed these before?
No, I have not.
First two things?
First, first venture, yes.
What, what inspired you to do this?
Uh, I have quite a few friends that have done it in the past. I have one of my best friends from college that actually sells the tend to companies that do that. And we actually looked at a site across from Mace Hardware, and it was gonna be a two-story, and we decided that was gonna cost too much money for a second floor. It's gonna cost about $100,000 for the wall. And I had this piece of property that I bought from Tommy Paul that I was able to purchase the property for what the wall was gonna cost. And I think, I know we have quite a few warehouses around here, but we really don't have any of the climate control that much. And I think that the industry is really going more towards climate control because the ones we have here are, you know, aging, and, and most people out here have problems with rat infestation, mold mildew in these outside units. So, we're looking at that climate control. And, you know, we plan on making it really a, a one place. It's not, I think it's gonna be able, everybody could put anything you want in these, in this facility. And when you go get it, it's gonna be just like it was when we put it in there.
So, you hope to draw all those people out of those other ones into yours?
I, I think, I hope so. That's what I'm hoping.
We all have to listen.
And, and the one thing about two is the RV and boat storage in the back, we plan on making that covered. Most people that have own campers, most of you want them, if you can't store them, you'd like to have them in a cover because the first thing that goes wrong with those things, they start leaking if you don't have them covered up. So, I think we're gonna try to make that a sort of upscale storage facility, too.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission on this item.
We have a move to recommend. Can I hear a second?
Yep. I'll second.
Got a move in a second to recommend approving. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. This hearing is closed for item C. We'll open up a public hearing for the last item on our agenda, which is item D, RZ-319-1268. I have to ask Rodney what the county's recommendation is for that first.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bray has submitted an application to rezone 9.694 acres of property located at Bradley Road in Talking Rock, Georgia. Current use listed for the property is agricultural, and Mr. Bray would like to rezone this property to rural residential. I believe the purpose is to split the property up into about five, six lots, something like that, to sell as a rural residential setting. The planning and development office does recommend this approval.
Mr. Bray, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Bray. I practice law in Jasper, and two other places, but I live in Higgins County. I live off a little road called Gray Square Point, which is off of Big Ridge Road. And I noticed the county went out there after a couple of years to put some new gravel on it, which I appreciate. It was just after all this rain. Uh, this particular property is owned by Larry Watson. Some of y'all may know Larry. He worked for Tom Phillips for years. Larry's close to a client and a friend of mine. If you've been by it, it's a 9.6 acres or so, and it's a heavily wooded tract. It doesn't lend itself very much to any agricultural uses. But I think important in this consideration, can we, that's the color that I'm. If, one of the considerations I thought of is what, is there similar zone property in the median percentage? Meaning, am I asking to do something that's inconsistent with a lot of other properties in the area? And it's actually consistent, and I don't have a big drawing of it, but I've got another one here. What's colored, the track outline is, I mean, considerations in red. What's in pink is similarly residential, rural residential properties. So, what we're doing is, is real consistent towards the masses I look above with what's in the neighborhood. We're not, it's unencountered of what's, and you notice a lot of a loss in that area of relatively small lots, too. So, the fellow that's talking about buildings and housing on it's a guy named Ernie Brown. Ernie is likewise a resident of Higgins County. He lives off of Masters Road, not too far from Gray Square Point. He, I call it a farm out there more than ever. I believe my buddy's got two, two views and one horse on it. I use a cattle business, but that's, that's a good way to spend money. If, if you would, if you look at it from the considerations normally, it would have an adverse impact on the area. Given that we're consistent with others on it, they won't have an adverse impact. If anything, it'll have a positive impact. When we visited out there the other day, what our ambition of thought is to put a four-mortar fence along the front of it. And I don't know, I just like four-mortar fences, but it gives it a more of a rural aspect or look. You know, the price of homes are, is escalating rather dramatically out there. And the hope is to hit homes somewhere in the 250 range or plus, which frankly is a little bit difficult to do given the cost of home construction now. When we think further about it, we're not, the area has county water available to it. We spoke to the utility folks, and of course, had to pour up to what quarters on the opposite side of the road. So, we poured under and crossed the lines over. We're not going to have any, it is consistent, I believe, with the proposed lenient plan in Higgins County, and the staff has recommended approval. Given that we have a no adverse effect, and it's not, certainly is not harmful or damaging to public welfare, and it's residential rule, which a minimum lot size is over an acre and a half, which is somewhere along the line. That's probably a little too big for us. And of course, we have to make sure it beats the second tank requirement for Higgins County through the environmental health department. So, having no adverse effect, consistent with the neighborhood, consistent with others on it, we are, Mr. Chairman, and fair the members of this board, asking you to give a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Bray?
So, how many lots do you propose?
It, it, it looks like it's gonna hit five, it may hit six. It just kind of depends on the type of it and depends on the soil scientists telling us about second tanks. That seems to dictate more than anything, sir, you know, where you put them. But it won't be, I'm thinking it's probably gonna hit five, as long as I can comply with their offices' requirements on everything.
And you do intend to pave the road?
Sir?
You do intend to pave the roads?
Uh, won't, won't need any roads.
Won't need any roads.
Not off the front of the road. We've got enough frontage to come right off the brad of the road.
Any other questions from Mr. Bray?
Yeah, I do.
I'm, I'm.
Oh, my word.
So, if all, if all the frontages come off the brad of the road, what's that make the width of each form?
Each of the individual lots have to be, I believe, 110 foot at the building setback line. There's, we've got a minimum lot width. There's, yeah, there's a minimum lot width in the subdivision standards. And I believe it's 110 foot at the building setback line. So, some of them may be deeper into the lot in order to obtain that. Some of them may be the 25 foot off the edge of right away.
Particularly lots got a lot of hardwoods on it. And the idea is to try to come in there and lay out a house or a lot to take advantage of the hardwood trees. That's the main thing we're trying to accomplish because, you know, it is a heavy forest piece.
Any other questions, Mr. Bray? If not, we have one person that'd like to speak on this agenda, Mr. Ted Callen.
Yeah. Yeah, my name's Ted Callen. I have property at the rear of this property and across the other one. I don't really have any issues with the subdivision as such. I didn't know how many feet there is on Bradley Road to get five lots down through there. How many lenient feet is down Bradley?
Down the, in front of the property?
Yeah, down, down the paper.
You know, you know that's right.
Is that like 659?
Somewhere.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, 110 feet is as narrow as it can be for a lot size.
That's per county ordinance.
Right. So, that would mean five lots with setback.
Okay, that, that was the best one, Mr. Bray, sure was rough looking at the dimensions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Looking at the dimension printed on the plaque right there, but it also includes its additional right away here. So, it's gonna be less than what's written on the plaque.
So, I guess my question is then, if in the subdivision, you're saying 110 feet, then there could only be five lots down through there.
But I would assume so. That, I mean, we're not here to dictate the number of lots. We're here.
No, I, I understand.
That'd be the building department part.
I just, I understand that part of it. So, we're looking at almost two acre tracts in, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we're only gonna do five lots maximum.
Okay. I, I mean, I just wouldn't ask that question.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the county department.
We have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. In the opposition? Motion carries. That closes that hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just mention this real quickly. Per state and local requirements, all advertising and notices of the properties have been met for each of the items under the new business. Number two, for each application, the case file in its entirety is being submitted to become part of the record. And number three, this meeting is being videotaped to become part of the record with all approvals.
Then that closes that hearing and moves us to the next item, which is item five, board comments. Are there any board comments?
I would, I would just say to Mr. Wood and company there that you understand that the property in question is already zoned to allow any number of other business ventures that could be there.
Yes.
And, you know, we've been at this table before where there were lots of objections to a particular venue and what was gonna happen. And based on objections, we, we turned down the request of the particular party, and the particular party went next door, which caused even more of a problem to the people who had the original concerns. So, you can run, but you can't hide. And I'd just be mindful of that, that somebody's gonna come along and take this piece of property because the bank wants to move it. And sometimes it's better to go with what, what you see and what you know than what you don't have. Just an observation.
Yep.
Based on sitting in this chair for a few years.
And I'd like to add that, again, just remind everybody that this is a recommending body. We do not establish zoning. We just recommend what happens with it. So, the final decision will be made by the board commissioners.
Do people get paid big bucks?
That's, that's right.
That's right. That's right.
And that's not here. Any other board comments? If not, item six is public comments. Yes, if you'd like to say something.
Yes. My name is Chris Elsever. I'm with the, my bank. I was with the Peak Street Bank prior to that. We started our bank 10 years ago after selling the predecessor bank. And we banked him with the Magnus for about 15 years. So, knew them very well. I worked with them after she passed away to try to keep their business going. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. We had to foreclose. It was a friendly foreclosure. You call David a relative now, and he would, I think, attest to that. But we have owned this property since 2016. I've had lots of uses. People that want to come, a motorcycle, used motorcycle dealership, gonna hang out on the weekends for motorcycles. I'm sure you don't want that coming through your neighborhood. You've had lots of uses. I've tried to be cognizant of what goes there to be protective of the neighbors. People that want to come, a motorcycle, used motorcycle dealership, going to hang out on the weekends for motorcycles. I'm sure you don't want that coming through your neighborhood. We've had lots of uses. I've tried to be cognizant of what goes there and be protective of the neighbors. And I really was excited about this, knowing their character, what they were planning to do. I think it is a very good use for the property. John is right, the property is deteriorating. I've tried to maintain it, keep it up, keep the grass cut. Doesn't look so great now. They're going out this week to take care of that. There was some misconception on, on what needed to be done, but the guy is going out this week and it's not working out today. But I think this is a very good use for the property. I'd like to just ask, Mr. Cagle, your opinion on the processes here at Pickens County? Whether or not the Alboards could meet with the homeowners and try to come to some conclusion that would be acceptable on hours of operation? Just how the facility would be maintained, what would be done? If there is a way to come back, if we were able to work something out and meet and talk and figure that out. So I want y'all to be protected and I really have done that over the last several years. So I hope you'll consider that, if that's an option, if we could do that, meet with them and possibly come back.
I'm not, I can't tell you you can or can't. I mean, that's, that's probably a matter between you, I mean, I, you know. But I would recommend that if both parties are willing. I'm always for friendly discussions and even if it turns into friendly discourse, we can agree to disagree. Sure. But your process, we could come back. Or do we just go to the Commissioners at that point? Well, again, we, we're, this recommendation is the one that I was, is going to the Board of Commissioners. Right. Not to approve or recommend, not to approve. Right. But they have the final decision. They can, and they have done that, you know, not many times, but they have done that in the past where we give a recommendation, whether it's thumbs up or thumbs down, and they do the opposite. So, and I would prefer to fill what the best process for this would be if. If you'd like, I'll talk to them. Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much. Just trying, trying to do the right thing with the property. I understand. Be respectful. You live there and I want to make sure it's a good use for your neighborhood. Thank you. Any other public comments? One more?
Yeah, whether I've got a dog in a hunt or a dog in a fight anymore, doesn't matter. What I would say to the people that sit up here is, you've got to build in your county. The powers that be at this county allowed that build to be built. 10,000 square foot. Big facility. It's going to have traffic. It's going to have people. It's going to have a process. It's going to have a life. And you can deny it, deny it, deny it, and they can deny it, and you can decide what to do and condemn it, tear it down, burn it down, whatever. But you've got something, as this gentleman points out, something's going to happen in that building sooner or later. And as part of the county that has an asset here that can bring revenue into the county, it can bring good things into the county. You've got to consider at some point what you go in there. If it's not this, that's fine, it's all your decision. But at some point, you've got to get off the no wagon and get on the what's going to happen wagon to something's going to have to go in there. And it's not my dog in the fight. I leave night with nothing. That's fine. I got, I'm fine. But, you know, the bank's got it, somebody's got to do something with it. If you've got a problem in your county, you're going to have to address it. You're going to have to figure out what's right, what's wrong. But sooner or later, something's got to happen. Or it gets to be a really bad thing for anybody to come to the county with a business, they get stuck. And people have medical issues and lose their business and all of a sudden, this building just becomes a vacant eyesore for everybody, including them, including the people that live there. And, you know, you're talking over a $2 million facility, not one disposal project, but it's being offered at a discount unbelievably low. Trying to find something to do with it before it just goes to a rat infested hole. And that's what it's going to be. It's all wood. It's only got a certain life to it and you've just got to figure that out. But except, that's not about us anymore, apparently. But just encouraging you that sat here tonight and listened to a nice event, friendly thing coming in and saying, no, you've got to figure out what's going to go in there. Because you're going to be presented again because he's going to sell it to somebody. And I just encourage you to think about what's going to happen in your county for the building. Thanks, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, Mr.?
My name is Rachel. I'm a resident of the Wards and I have children right down the street. So my concern is, I have a few questions. One, you say it's what, you know, it's better to what you know than what you don't know. Well, what I don't know is what are the parameters of what kinds of events are going to be there? Anyways, some suggestions of holiday events and whatnot, but I'd like a little detail as to what types of events, I've been talking about hosting the Rainbow Family like they did up and down ago. Because I'd really rather not that be down the street from me. So that's a concern as far as what is and what is not allowed. Another thing is what I heard is an extension of the community. So is this specifically for hosting events versus for the county? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Well, I heard them say, not last, you know, if I'm, if I'm saying something inaccurate, please correct me. They said any corporate retreat, weddings, retirement parties, any wide array, array of events could be there. They haven't really specified a target as specific of the market or segment. But it could be anywhere from a wedding this weekend to a retirement party, to a baby shower, to whatever makes sense. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's going to be very similar to the, we're very familiar with the chimneys at Big Canoe and the lodge at Big Canoe. It would be very similar to those two event facilities.
So is this going to be targeted just for Big Canoe or is this for the public in general?
It's for the public in general. It would, it would run along those events, though, that chimney at Big Canoe and the lodge.
Sounds like something similar to what Ballground has with Wheeler House? Something similar to that?
Yes, sir.
Passed it on the way in?
That's very, very correct.
Are you familiar with that deal with Wheeler House? Any other comments? Total comments?